Okay. Welcome, everyone, to July 30th. Okay, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 18, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain it at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President Allen?
Here. Okay, let's do pledge of allegiance. Chief Evers, will you lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed sessions.
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed session meeting minutes of July 9, 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion approved. On to report.
All in favor.
All in favor, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved, sorry. Clerk Lickatisse? Okay, on to reports. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, well, first I have an update about Bryant Pond. As of about two weeks ago, the county's contractor was in the process of removing the second stockpile of vegetation, which was hydro-raked from the pond. Test results determine where the recycling, which recycling facility that it will be sent to, and that was underway at that time about two weeks ago. At this point, I got an email just today from the county. Their goal is still to remove as much from the pond as possible. Funding does remain, but they're waiting on a proposal from the contractor as to the recommendation of how much more sediment they will remove. I will continue to keep in contact with the county, and I will provide updates to the Summit community as I learn more. National Night Out is next Tuesday, August 6, from 6:00 to 8:45 on the Village Green. There will be free hot dogs courtesy of the Police Athletic League, food trucks, bounce houses, and my favorite, Dunka Cop for a Cause, and the Blessing of the Badges will take place at 7:00 PM. I want to congratulate our two classes of graduates from the Summit Police Youth Academy. Last week and the week before, we had two sessions, and as usual, our police department put together an exceptional program. I think Councilman Vartan can actually speak more, better to this than I can, but special thanks to Officer David Kattiga for spearheading the effort again this year and for putting together a fabulous video each week. And thank you to the team of officers for their energy and their commitment to making the experience so outstanding. I thoroughly enjoyed my piece of the Police Youth Academy, so thank you all. Last, I want to, I look forward to, our homelessness task force chair, Leah Griffith, will share a full briefing with us in September, but I'm going to give you some highlights as to what's been going on with the homelessness task force. The committee began meeting on June 17 and has met 11 times already this summer. The group has broad representation from police, fire, EMS, bridges, Warmhearts Ship, clergy, family promise, Bridgeway, Overlook Hospital, downtown Summit business owners, and Summit residents. There are 25 total committee members. After two initial meetings, the committee has been broken down into five subgroups, and those focus on families, individuals engaged in case management, individuals refusing case management, data and prevention, and diversion, and housing. Summit Police and case management have been conducting weekly outreach to individuals not engaged to connect the homeless with case management. That's all I have today.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Our city administrator is on vacation, so I'm sure he's not watching, but if he is, I hope he's having a great time. My report is, first, on the business agenda tonight, we have two resolutions on the agenda that we are going to be pushing to September because we need more analysis or feedback, so I'm just giving everybody a heads up. The resolutions are ID 11359, which authorizes the SDI's request for a fence around parking lot 1, and ID number 11384, which will authorize the change order for the work being done on Wildwood and Oxbow. The next is half-season membership. Will be available for the Summit Family Aquatic Center at half-price beginning August 1. You can register for a half-season membership by calling the Department of Community Programs at 908-277-2932, or visiting the community center. Second, I also enjoyed the academy graduation. Everybody did a great job, as usual. I just wanted to say, I've been on this dais for about three and a half years, and it gives you a very up-close and personal look at how city government operates. And as I sat in the audience watching the academy graduates, it reminded me that City Hall and government work is not nine-to-four. Oftentimes, everybody says, oh, it's government work, it's nine-to-four, and everybody in this, in City Hall, they work various events, whether it's, you know, they work all day and they have events at night, they really put their heart and soul into the work that they do, whether it's the movie on the green, whether it's Government Week, cultural events, concerts, and so forth. So I just wanted to recognize that it really made me feel like Summit is a special place. So thanks to all our police who were, who ran the event. Which also brings me to this. So I want to, I want to thank Deputy Clerk Kattiga, because she helped me do this. I've been wanting to give, our council would like to award Rosemary Clerk Lickatisse for the extraordinary work that you do. So basically what this says, "In appreciation of outstanding and dedicated service as clerk of City of Summit, this certifies the recognition is awarded to Clerk Lickatisse." So she made honor roll, so I'll just read this. So, "Dear Rosemary Lickatisse, congratulations, you've earned a place on the 2024 Municipal Clerk's Honor Roll, enclosed as a certificate and a commemorative pin, giving only to honorees. It's in its 24th year, and everybody can go to the list municipalclerkhonorroll.com to see the entire list, but we're delighted to share the happy news with you that you've been included on this distinguished list." How many years have you been here?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four years.
Yeah.
And every... I just, Rosemary is the go-to in City Hall. She's extraordinary, and none of us would get this work done without her. So I want to say thank you to Deputy Clerk Kattiga for helping us find this, and thank you for the amazing work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get more. I can just put this on the other side. Thank you. Just for the record, it's my honor to be here and serve each council that I've served, and growing up in this town, it just makes it that more special, that much more special. When I was in high school, I was the secretary to the student council, and I swore after I did the first set of minutes, I would never do this work again. And look where I am. But anyway, it's my honor and my pleasure to serve. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to historical minute, Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. So the kids are still out, and that means I don't have a volunteer, so I'll be doing the historic minute tonight. Last week, or last meeting, I told everybody about the library website and the fact that they have all the old yearbooks on there, which is fascinating. I'm actually kind of addicted to looking through them. But this is my history of Summit, New Jersey, which some of you may have seen. It's called From Poverty Hill to the Hill City. It's by Edmund Raftis, who I believe used to live here. It goes through 1996, I think, which is when Jamelle graduated from high school, and Greg was probably still in diapers, if he was even alive. But although it is out of print, it can be had on eBay, for anybody who's interested. And I just want to read a couple parts of it tonight. The first, one of the first chapters talks about where Summit got its name. So in 1899, the Summit Herald, which is a newspaper that used to be delivered in person, for those of you who are here, called Summit the Hill City. The name stuck, as a reference to any Summit directory will show. Hill City Cleaners, Hill City Delicatessen, et cetera. So the lore always was that it's because we're at the top of the Wachung Mountains. And so it goes into a whole history of how a glacier tore through this area and created valleys and mountains. And the second Wachung Mountain, at the beginning of the Jurassic Period, about 185 million years ago, before any of us were even in diapers, North America, South America, Europe, and Africa formed one large continent called Pangaea, but it began to break up and drift with resulting faults and rifts in the Newark Basin, from which a series of at least three extensive lava flows formed three mountains. The second is, the second Wachung Mountain is, at the top of that mountain is Summit. And so in this, in this chapter, there's, I don't know, a story that somebody wrote about an argument that they had in a, on a train, you know, why do they call it Summit? And because we're the highest, highest city in New Jersey, and Morris Town's higher, and Montclair's higher, and the guy did the research, and there are parts of Morris Town that are higher, but Morris Town is not higher than Summit. So there you have it.
I was actually at Reeves Reed the other day, and I think it wasn't that valley, that one area, caused by a glacier?
I think it was.
I think the whole, yeah. Could be wrong, we could look up. My second question is, we didn't have, we didn't have any students the last two meetings. How would they apply to do the historical minute? Can we get like a form, or how would we?
Well, right now, Mrs. Aaron and the head of the History Department have been helping to find people.
Oh, okay. Okay, I was just curious.
It's the summer. My son was going to come tonight, but he bailed, so.
Great, thank you. All right, so we are going to move to public comments. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes any comments from members of the public about issues not on tonight's topic. I'm going to restate that. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues not on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience member reads from a prepared statement or has a question, please provide a copy to the cityclerk@cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers, please say your name, your home address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If you come up and you are also representing an organization, please indicate which organization you are speaking for. Again, only one at a time, please. When you come up and speak, nobody talk over each other, just be respectful of one another. And if it seems to be running long tonight for public comment, I'll cut it at an hour, and then we will pick up public comment again at the end of the business agenda. So, so it is eight, 7:50. If it goes longer than 8:50, we'll put public comment at the end of the business agenda. So whoever would like to come up, I see a hand in the back. So public comment will be open now. Okay, all right, you're good. Just make sure you speak into the, yeah, mic.
My name is Mary Jo Becucci de Fonzo. I live at 12 Washington Avenue. I'm an SHS graduate of '81, three children who are also SHS graduates. I was present at the July 9 meeting, as it was the anniversary of my father's passing, but the video I watched of this meeting was very disturbing. It sounds as though what transpired was a simple misunderstanding, but then grew to hatred. Are understandings even permitted anymore? What do you see when you look at me? My name says it all, right? Incorrect. I am also part Native American, Kansas Delaware, to be exact. Don't bother looking it up, as this tribe is not recognized by the US government. Why even mention this? It was Peter LaJoy at the last meeting who said, "You don't know someone's background, so maybe now I have your attention." Let me begin by saying, a few years ago, I had never heard of Jamelle's name, even though his wife and I and he are all SHS graduates. He coached sixth grade youth football with my husband Matt. He said Jamelle was a great coach, patient with the kids, explained what they needed extra work or attention on, and a terrific leader. Jamelle reached out to me before his campaign for council, because he liked, understood what I had to say. Anytime I've had to call him and Delia about issues in my neighborhood, or in a neighborhood where my family owns property, I've reached out to both of them and had issues resolved with, with success. I will not stand here as a resident of this city for 50 years and let fall by the wayside the demeaning, degrading, and derogatory comments at the last common council meeting concerning these two individuals. Delia has gone above and beyond to assist veterans locate housing. Some were more concerned about her contacting them via private messenger than her assisting veterans. What did the prior administration do to assist veterans? Nothing that I recall. Are you aware that 22 veterans per day take their own lives? The comments and accusations about these two individuals were nothing short of disgusting. Because they have chosen to serve in the public capacity, does not for a second indicate that they deserve to be crucified for defending themselves. They are on this council to serve us all. Anybody who thinks differently of these two individuals needs serious soul searching. Congratulations, you have now secured the fact that any young man or woman of color to run for common council in this city will not do so as a Republican after the nonsense Jamelle has had to endure. Are you proud of yourselves? How is that a positive experience? What purpose did any of this serve? Allow me to introduce you to the following names. CJ Pearson, a young conservative involved in politics since he was 13. Candace Owens, author of the book Blackout. Dr. Ben Carson, world-renowned neurologist. The Hodge Twins, Kevin and Keith Hodge. Dan Bongino, former Secret Service and now host of The Dan Bongino Show.
Sorry. Thank you. I know.
Well, you have the letter.
The full statement will be in the minutes.
Thank you.
Wait, hold on one second, let me just make sure this is ready.
Ally Sternberg for Dale Drive. I'm here to raise a proposal for the city to prioritize the installation of a sidewalk on the south side of Ashland Road between Rotary Drive and Silver Lake Drive. For the community who lives on the south side of Ashland Road, this street is the main connection point between our neighborhood and the remainder of town, including all schools, Memorial Field, and downtown Summit. Unfortunately, the majority of Ashland Road, until you arrive at Pine Grove Avenue, does not have a sidewalk. This is most dangerous in the stretch between Rotary Drive and Silver Lake Drive, where there's no alternate street to walk on. Due to this, residents are forced to either drive everywhere they go or walk directly in the street, which is a busy road with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour, though cars often go much faster. This poses significant safety risks for pedestrians, causing them to walk directly on people's lawns, which is not an option for those with mobility challenges or pushing a stroller. This becomes even more dangerous at night or in the later part of the year when the sun sets earlier. There are no lights on the side of Ashland Road, increasing the risk of being hit while walking. I'm not just speaking on behalf of my family today. My husband and I put together a petition that has accumulated 160 signatures and counting, of fellow residents who are eager for change and for sidewalks be implemented. This strong community support underscores the urgency and importance of this matter. I also would like to note that the 2019 City of Summit Sidewalk Installation and Maintenance Plan highlighted this area of Ashland Road as a location of a new proposed sidewalk. I am kindly asking this town council to prioritize the installation of this much-needed sidewalk in order to enhance safety, improve accessibility, and contribute to the overall well-being of our community. I would appreciate your support and guidance on next steps.
Thank you. Thanks. Yep, we'll take that. Thank you. Oh, thank you.
I want to thank Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, and members of the council.
Name and address.
Oh, wait, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Name and address, please.
Yeah, okay. My name is Katia Segray Cohen, and I've been worshiping in Summit for 25 years at Beth Hatikva at 36 Chatham Road in Summit, and I'm a member of the Summit Anti-Racism Committee. I want to thank Mayor Fagan, Council President Allen, and members of the council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Anti-Racism Committee of the Summit Interfaith Council, and would like to enter into the record the following statement. We do this to clarify past issues and in the spirit of unity, progress, and equity, as we all work together to make Summit a better place. As was established at the July 9 council meeting, the Anti-Racism Committee and the Summit Interfaith Council were not involved in the planning of the Summit Juneteenth event. All statements claiming either organization was involved are mistaken and incorrect. If the issue is raised in the future, we ask that the common council and its members set the record straight about the committee's non-involvement. On a forward note, the common council has indicated that it would like to engage in further dialogue and problem-solving to serve the greater good of the community. We, the Anti-Racism Committee, will offer racial equity training before the end of the year and invite members of the common council and the mayor to take part in this training. Racial equity training is designed to help us identify and acknowledge our own biases, misunderstandings, and racial behavior. It also helps us to see issues from the perspectives of multiple stakeholders. We believe this can only increase understanding, mutual respect, and commitment to solve, to solutions among all of us. Therefore, we look forward to collaborating with you on the precise timing of the training that would allow the mayor and common council members to participate. We appreciate the commitment of the common council to the common good and share that commitment. Even if we do not always align on how to achieve these goals, we look forward to a positive and open partnership with the common council. Thank you.
Okay. You all right?
I'm good, yeah.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. Alexander Block, 54 Rotary Drive, resident of Summit since 2016, father of three children, Noah, age 10, rising fifth grader at Franklin, Leora and Talia, both age seven, rising second grader who's also at Franklin. Here to echo some of the statements from my neighbors and friends about the need for a sidewalk on Ashland Road, Mountain Road, excuse me, Ashland Road, apologies. Well, this specifically asked to be extended not just to Pine, to Silver Lake, but all the way to Pine Grove. I do recognize that there is a parallel street on Plymouth, but I do think the safest and most convenient and effective option would be to build a sidewalk all the way down to Pine Grove. That being said, as a father of three young children, and I'm sure most parents of young children would know, I have a son who's 10, he acts like he's 25, and he's really just begging for independence. You know, he wants to go walk to his friend's house, he wants to ride his bike into town, he wants to take the train to visit his cousins in New York City. Some of this is practical, some of this, you know, I don't know if I'd let you do that even five or 10 years. But that said, you know, as, as a parent, and while Summit is a very safe and reliable town that I'm proud to be a resident of, certainly, you know, safety is a top priority. And without having a sidewalk, it makes it very difficult for everybody to get from Rotary, Dale, Tanglewood, Drumhill, you name it, to Memorial Field, to Franklin, to the train station, to the farmer's market, to go out to dinner, to go, just to go out and see their friends. And it's really hard. You see a lot of walkers, runners, joggers, strollers trying to get into town, and you have no option but to walk on the sidewalk, sorry, walk on the grass or walk on the street. It's a 35 mile an hour speed limit. I often see cars going much faster than that, to where I even feel uncomfortable going for my morning run. And what makes me even more concerned is, you know, I'll be driving home in the evening on a Saturday night after dinner, or coming back from New York City on the train, and what I see is groups of teenagers, you know, almost spilling onto, onto the street. You know, you're trying to stay to the side, but it's very tough for them. Maybe they've been drinking, hopefully they haven't been, but that is a reality. And we have drivers coming back from a nice dinner in town, getting back to New Providence, Scotch Plains, Berkeley Heights. Maybe they've been drinking, hopefully they haven't, but I really feel like we're one bad text message away from a horrible, horrible tragedy that we'd all love to avoid. I've studied the 2019 plan, and I do recognize that it does allow for a sidewalk, not just from Rotary to Silver Lake, but from Rotary all the way to Pine Grove. And I have also noticed that many of the other large thoroughfares into and out of Summit, such as River Road, Morris Avenue, Springfield Avenue, all have sidewalks as well, and I really think it isolates our part of town by not having a sidewalk there. I've estimated, by doing a count off of the maps on Zillow, there's about 200 homes, I'd estimate 400 children, 800 total residents. And I would highly use my last 10 seconds to please ask the council to consider escalating this project, I think would really make our neighborhood a much better and a much safer place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, wait, you guys are, go ahead.
Good evening. Susan Hairston, 20 Lowell Avenue. And I don't have prepared remarks, because I'm still getting up to speed on just coming back in, and so a couple things on my mind, I want to echo the last speaker who wants sidewalk safety to be a priority. And I don't know, I have more questions than I do about where are the opportunities for us to know when you'll be publicly talking about some of these things. So I'm trying to get back into the walking, and I got ambitious and walked down Kemplace Boulevard, as if, and I'm terrible at street names, but I know it's not going towards the dump, but it's the major street that takes you down to the backside of Navardis, and that might not even be the name of it, but what I is, was dumbfounded, is that there is no sidewalk there, and I know that is a place where people who work are, go in. And I know that might be if it's county, but I just wanted to know when we will know about the plans for the sidewalk, and I was really hoping Aaron was going to be here, because it is super unsafe on River Road. And to get there, you have to do these kind of heroics, to go across the street to the Sunoco Station, and then walk up. You have it really nicely done in front of sunrise, so you could hang out there, and you got to walk across the street, but it is frightening, the way the cars come around, and I know they're not paying attention, they're just trying to get through the lights and avoid the traffic there. So I wanted to know when that is going to be discussed. I am really happy, Council President, that you have made it a priority to try to bring healing to this community, and I'd like to know, when will you have that discussion publicly, so we can stop the madness and talk about how we're going to get to a place where we have healing in this community, where we are focused on the well-being of the community. And with that in mind, affordable housing. I'm just getting back into town, I'm here, and I don't know what's happening, where do I have an opportunity to hear about that and engage with the public? I am happy to be in this role again. And lastly, oh, I'm going to forget what it was, but as a former councilperson, I want to understand how we're getting invited, to the number of people who are leaving, I want to be included in the celebration of staff leaving. And so I don't know what kind of a notice you're putting out, but please, keep me in the loop on that one.
You got it.
Thank you.
Send me an email, Susan.
Yeah, I was going to say email.
I'll keep you on the list.
Put the staff, maybe? Can I be on that list?
Yes.
Paul Chinchuli, 121 Orchard Street. I'm hearing a lot of people talking about traffic and safety and 30 and 35 mile an hour speed limits on their road. I'm on Orchard Street, and it's a residential road, and Orchard Street is 40 miles an hour. And I don't know of another residential street in Summit that's 40 miles an hour. I've been down there 51 years, and I've seen, I've seen a bunch of stuff happen, with cars hitting- see a 40 mile an hour speed zone, and, you know, they, "Well, it's 40, I can do 50." And they do, 50-plus. And I don't know why there's no speed traps posted out. I haven't seen a speed trap out on Orchard Street in 35 years. And I don't know why. Because to me, it's a goldmine for the town of Summit with speeding tickets. I just don't understand how that road can be 40 miles an hour. And the other problem with that is because of the change they made with Bryant Park becoming one-way, people are now -- they shortcut the light on Orchard, and they come out the side roads of Harvard and Yale. And, you know, if the speed limit on that road was 25 or 30, it gives me a little bit more chance to get out of my driveway. When they're coming down that road 40, 45, 50 miles an hour, I don't have a chance. And I sit there and I wait, and I wait, and I wait. And I still don't -- I still would like to know more about how Bryant Parkway got switched from temporary to permanent without -- I don't know of anybody on my street that knew what was happening. There was no input. So I just would like to, you know, see what we can do about lowering that speed limit on Orchard, I think would help a lot.
Thank you. Paul, will you send -- Mr. Chinchuli, will you send an email to Clerk Lickertis?
Sure.
Okay. Did I say it right, your last name? I didn't say it right, did I?
Chinchuli, yeah.
Chinchuli, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Michelle Kalmanson, 67 Butler Parkway. I just have a question. Has the criteria for releasing a NICSOL alert changed? I've been talking to friends and neighbors, and I'm finding out about cars that have been stolen, but I haven't heard about them. So it seems like cars are still being stolen, but we're just not hearing about it. So that's my question. Has anything changed with the NICSOL alerts or the Facebook posts, what you need to know? Thank you.
Thanks. I'm sorry, was the question directed to me? No, no, what I'm going to -- no, I want to answer it here. Yeah. No, I thought you were going to say something. Oh, no.
Hi. Elliot Fishman, 34 Webster Avenue, Summit, New Jersey, resident for about 16 years. Sometimes shorter is better, so I'll keep this remark to two sentences. Just up here for a deep signal of respect, admiration for councilmembers Boyer and Hamlet who, in this community, have been under deep unfair attack the past month or so, both in public forum and online. And the whole community supports them and respects your work. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Tara Gagniano, 6 Ashwood Court in Summit. Haven't been here in a while. On July 14th, a resident posted on Facebook a clip from the April 24th Common Council meeting highlighting the resolution to authorize the allocation of capital funding to repair the damage to my property and city property done by Habitat for Humanity. At that meeting, Councilman Greg Vartan stated the following: "If you show up to council meetings, complain, and support the candidates who won the last election, you will be rewarded with public funds for your private project." In essence, this rogue councilman, Greg Vartan, is accusing us of some wrongdoing. We have a Superior Court settlement agreement -- settlement and release agreement which only the residents of Summit, of Ashwood Court, have been made to uphold, not the City of Summit, the zoning board, nor Habitat for Humanity. This agreement was signed by the previous council and Mayor Nora Radist, who openly refused to help my family. Am I just to sit back and not stand up for my family, my property, and my dead parents' legacy? The pain and suffering we endured these past six years is unconscionable. Greg has been told on the dais by the council attorney, Mike Rogers, city administrator, that they are following the settlement and release agreement. Despite being told this, he continues to accuse and grandstand. My family has been put through enough. As of this time, we are exploring our options on how to deal with this councilman and the accusations he is making. He clearly has a personal issue, and by his actions and public statements, how is he able to carry out his position effectively? With that being said, Councilwoman Delia Hamlet, Council President Lisa Allen are the only two from that previous council that stepped out and reached out to my family with humanity, compassion. From there, they forged the path for the other council members, now council members, to come out. They didn't have to, but they did, and they helped us. That is their jobs, to represent the city and represent the residents. I thank you very much for all your help and everything that you guys are enduring up on the dais for doing your jobs, Councilwoman Delia Hamlet, Councilman Jamelle Boyer. That's unconscionable. But I thank you very much and know that you are supported. Thank you.
Can I give you another seat?
Yes. Okay. Okay.
Vicki Letterman, 52 Clark Street. This country was founded on separation of church and state and freedom from religion. That means no faith or pastor has any bearing on anything this city does or doesn't do. This city does not answer to them or owe them anything. Here in Summit, professionals advise us on where we should build affordable housing and other city affairs, not clergy. And they especially have no authority to speak for Summit in Trenton. They are not elected, do not work for the city, and most don't even live here. How dare they? As guests in our, not their, city, they're abusing their welcome. I believe that creating as much affordable housing as ostensibly can is simply the right thing to do. It has nothing to do with faith. Building mixed affordable and market-rate housing on the Red Cross property is probably the one issue that everyone, faithful or not, can get behind. One of the largest undeveloped properties, it is in a lovely residential neighborhood that backs up to a primary school and children's playground and is walking distance to a supermarket and train station. And it's certainly big enough to hold the 40 or 50 units that At Home in Summit and some vocal pastors are so worried about. It's a win-win. Those who most zealously support the affordable housing laws obviously also support the many ways they provide for municipalities and developers to acquire property. So I am frustrated, disappointed, and feeling a little bit more than -- and feeling more than a little bit deceived that the pastors who drone on and on of how they support affordable housing don't practice what they preach. Instead of donating the Red Cross property, they want to erect a golden calf which houses no one. The real Gothamist headline should be, "Rich New Jersey Parish Turns Down Affordable Housing Development to Build Pricey, Ossentasious Church." I've contacted the publication about it. It's cruel, morally reprehensible, and minimizes the desperate need in our community. However, since the so-called faithful believe in repentance and second chances, they should hear that call themselves to turn back their foolish ways and try again. Put their property and their $20 million where their mouth is. Their moral promise requires that their actions speak louder than their words. Let's see them live their own damn faith. Enough of the sanctimonious preaching and demanding others do what they so selfishly don't. Their nibiism, racism, and self-righteous hypocrisy are cruel and morally reprehensible. And if they don't mend the error of their ways, then council must do what's morally right and use its authority, as provided by law, to acquire the property for the affordable housing we all proclaim to want. Let's not falsely plead with the courts that there's simply no land in Summit when this is the perfect site. I've made the Fair Share Housing Center aware of the property and situation. Tomford Valley alleged faithful to cut the hypocrisy for them to practice what they preach and butt out of Secretary and City Affairs.
You had seven seconds.
No, this is fine. This is fine. Thank you. Okay. All right. Hello. We're not ready.
I'm Danielle Doherty. I live at 37 Tanglewood Drive. I don't have a lengthy statement prepared, but I want to echo the sentiments of my neighbors about the sidewalk on Ashland between Rotary and Silver Lake. Installing that sidewalk per the 2019 plans presented earlier would do so much to connect our part of town with the rest of Summit. My husband and I have two young children, and the current situation on Ashland makes it impossible for us to walk to Memorial Field or downtown with our kids. It's just simply too dangerous, and it would mean a lot to the neighborhood that we live in if we could install that sidewalk and revisit the plans that were put in place five years ago in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions, comments for public comment? Because I'm going to close it down. Okay, we're going to close a public comment. Is there any comments from councilmembers?
Okay. I can make a quick comment if you want.
Okay.
Or if you want me to. I just had a quick comment. I just want to thank the residents for coming up about the sidewalk. I got your videos. I was supposed to come out there today, but I was flying home, so I just want to say thank you for coming. I have to look into -- I didn't realize --
Master Plan.
Greg and Andy, yeah, I'm not sure if we have to look back in 2019 and what got approved. I was talking with Rosemary about it today. I'll have to do a little bit of research and see. It is my committee, so I'll make sure that -- and I think we formally put it in as a discussion-action referral, correct, Rosie?
Yeah.
So the process, now it'll go through a formal process. It'll be looked at safety, through safety and through my committee as well. So I just want to say thank you, and it's so powerful when you come with 150, you know, families who have the same concern. So, thank you for coming. I think that --
Council President, can I ask a --
Yeah, absolutely. Oh, Councilmember Tann?
Thank you, Delia. Thank you to everyone who came to talk about that. What we were talking about in 2019 was the sidewalk installation and maintenance policy, which, to some people, we were referring to it as the sidewalk master plan, but we use the term "master plan" entirely too much. So, basically what it is, is my favorite page of it is the 26th page, which has the map of the city where there's sidewalks now, and they're green, where sidewalks should be, and they're orange, right? So it's basically a matter of funding and prioritization of where those things get installed. When we started with all this several years ago, and we've been pretty diligent over the past several years to start with safe-walking routes to school, and then from there, where we were doing road projects already, that you could also then piggyback off of that, where there's grant funding available, all that stuff. It makes it a little bit more complicated when it's a county road. However, there are three county roads where they absolutely, absolutely are needed: Ashland, Mountain, and then Glen Side. So those would be my -- that's my pitch for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, both of you. Did you finish your comments?
No, just that we do talk about these actively in committee every week, so when Director Schreger gets back, and he usually does a quarterly report, so at the next meeting, and to former Councilwoman Hairston, we can certainly provide an update in the next month or so on sidewalks. And I think that some of your thoughts today, I think you're thinking about maybe New Vernon and some of those other areas. I can't remember exactly what you had mentioned, but we'll certainly get back to you.
Passaic, right? Passaic?
Passaic, yeah. Passaic, because they go really fast on Passaic, yes. Agree.
Okay. Mayor, would you like to talk about the NICSOLs?
Yeah. No policy changes have occurred for the NICSOL alerts. Chief, there's nothing -- I mean, we're doing the same procedure and same determination as to when NICSOL alerts go out. The one thing that causes some confusion a lot of times, and I have been told 17 times, I finally think I figured it out, is, you know, if it's an urgent "we need your help" situation or an urgent "you need to stay inside" situation, those things will go out immediately. Occasionally, we get information about somebody pulled on a door handle, or there was an attempted car theft, or there was, you know, and it's 12 hours later, and it's sort of the NICSOL is really intended for sort of more urgent information. So that's sort of where it gets managed, and so perhaps that's why you're not, you know, notified necessarily of every single attempt, every report police have taken. So, you know, you will, and Chief Zagorski and Chief Evers, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my sort of takeaway, is we will -- you will be informed if there's urgent need to know. And then, obviously, we do update if there are things that the public is, you know, alerted to from neighbors and so forth. Fair? Either of you have anything to add? Thumbs up's good. Chief, good? All right.
Okay.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Just to follow up on that, there is a police blotter that is on our website that is published, I believe, each month, every two weeks. So for any police activity, you can see on the city website, there is a police blotter as well. I do want to thank the residents that came up and spoke about Ashland. Not only do I would like to throw my support behind the urgency of putting together our sidewalks, and hopefully, you know, when Director Schreger gets back from vacation, Councilwoman Delia Hamlet and Greg Vartan, maybe we can kind of put a little focus on the sidewalks. And even though it's a union county, I know it's a little bit more difficult setting up those roads, it's not impossible. So, the other thing I would like to advocate for, and I believe Aaron Schreger has already mentioned that we did receive the insurance, or we had to supply the county with the insurance regarding the beacon lights on the crosswalks for Ashland, and I believe, is it Ashland and Ox?
Colt.
Colt Road. So, what my communication back from Aaron Schreger was that those would be prioritized for the month of August. So, hopefully that will help in going through Safety Committee. I think Councilman Boyer and I have spoken, who's like, you know, what, why do we need prioritaries one over the other? Why can't we just do both? So, hopefully those will be installed before school starts.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Boyer?
Council President. So, I'm a '90s boy in Summit, and we never had sidewalks, right? Like, most streets. And before I joined council, and I think the year of campaigning, I was kind of opposed to sidewalks. I was kind of like, well, why, we never had sidewalks before, we just kind of ran around. But then, I live on Morris Avenue, and I'm a runner now. I started jogging, right? So I run down Ashland, maybe some of you have seen me, Pine Grove, Passaic, these are like, they're very dangerous streets. My mind has changed completely. 360, I think, you know, Summit should be a walking town and have sidewalks. And we need to set the progression and progress to add sidewalks, especially, you know, Ashland and Glen Side Avenue. Glen Side Avenue is very dangerous. When I was campaigning, me and my daughter, we did a little, we did like a little contest, like who can run from driveway to driveway real fast after their cars went by. It's kind of scary. So she'll never go campaigning on that street with me ever again until we get sidewalks. But, yeah, I'm a big fan of sidewalks, and I think we're all in agreement that we need them. I think it's just a budget thing and how we do them and how fast that we do them, right? Is there a moment where we can, because I know now we get to the ordinance and resolutions, is there a moment where we can have the chief come up and talk about safety and where we are with the stats and everything? I don't know when we should do that.
Is he prepared for that? Is he prepared? You know, he can come up now. I guess it would be appropriate, because everybody's here, I think at the end of the meeting during council comments, everyone will disappear. Let's, I will do that. I just, is there any other thing to talk about? Any questions?
Yeah, I think that was the last to talk, so that's why.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. You know, all I wanted to say was, before we move to the chief then, that's fine. Councilwoman Hairston, if I may still call you that, I would love to have coffee and talk to you about healing in the community. I also agree that sidewalks, I'm a big proponent of sidewalks. Pine Grove, I was a little skeptical because when Pine Grove, I love the idea of the sidewalk going in on Pine Grove, but it had narrowed the road, so I was concerned. But our family walks on that sidewalk literally every day, so I totally get it, and I appreciate the Pine Grove sidewalk, and so does my husband and our Tucker dog. And affordable housing, Mr. DeLore, do you want to say anything about affordable housing? You don't have to, I just --
Yeah, I think that was the last to talk, so that's why.
Is that, okay. Yeah, yeah, I, you know, all I wanted to say was, before we move to the chief then, that's fine. Councilwoman Harrison, if I may still call you that, I would love to have coffee and talk to you about healing in the community. I also agree that sidewalks, I'm a big proponent of sidewalks. Pine Grove, I was a little skeptical, because when Pine Grove, I love the idea of the sidewalk going in on Pine Grove, but it had narrowed the road, so I was concerned. But our family walks on that sidewalk literally every day, so I totally get it, and I appreciate the Pine Grove sidewalk, and so does my husband and our Tucker dog. And affordable housing, Mr. DeLorey, do you want to say anything about affordable housing? You don't have to, I just.
Well, I was just going to say, so just so you know, we were talking about creating a process for vetting developers. There will be more to come in September, but we want the council to feel comfortable with how the developers are coming to the city, because as round four happens, that means that there's going to be a lot of developers approaching us, so we would just want to do it in a methodical way. So, Mr. DeLorey, if you'd like to talk a little bit?
Sure. Through you, Council President, the Mount Laurel Subcommittee's meeting, obviously there are a lot of ways developers can approach the city, so we're working on, and with council, to make sure that there's sort of a very clear pathway, there's no confusion. A lot of developers, obviously, will be coming forward, and we want to make sure that we let them know that there is a very specific path, that it's equitable, and that everyone will be given an opportunity. These are obviously for developments that include affordable housing in them. So we'll be working with professionals and council to come up with some formal way to memorialize that process in the very near future, and hopefully, be real serious about how we can get more units in the city and, you know, do our fair share as best we can.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and, and one last thing, Councilwoman. I think healing in general, and what happens in our community, starts with each of us, so I'm hoping to model behavior for the community. Okay? Chief, would you like to come on up?
Council, um, real quick. I just want to make a comment. At the end of the meeting tonight, through my council comments, I'll also be giving a recap of the planning board meeting last week, where we did talk, and Mr. DeLorey talked a lot at the planning board meeting about the cross-acceptance and the state plan that will be coming out in September, and some of the other affordable housing, things that will be changing in 2020, 2024, 2025, for the rest of the year, so I can give a quick recap if, if everybody would like on that.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Okay. Chief?
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to provide a brief report, where I hope to give you a snapshot of the types of crimes and the frequency.
Chief, just make sure you pull the microphone a little closer. There you go. Thank you.
I'll give you a snapshot of the types of crimes and the frequency of their occurrence in the first six months of this year. This breakdown should give you all a better understanding of the nature and scope of the criminal activity in the town, and how it compares to the past years, and it'll also answer the resident's question, why she might not have seen some reports on certain activity in town. I'll break it down, this crime report down into two categories of crime. First, the two categories are violent crime and property crime. First, I'll cover the violent crime, which is your most serious crimes. It consists of manslaughter, murder, robbery, aggravated assault, and rape. Violent crime, they're the most serious types of crimes, okay? In 2024, at, at this point in 2024, we have five reported violent crimes. This is down three from 2023, where we had eight. Fortunately, in Summit, we don't experience a lot of violent crimes. Historically, we'll, in a year, we'll, we'll have maybe between four and maybe nine violent crimes, which is still way, way below state and national averages. Property crimes. At this point, at the six-month point in 2024, property crimes have increased slightly since last year, up 8%. We have 88 reported property crimes in 2024 at this point. At the same point last year, we had 81. This number varies. It varies quite a bit, because, but the reason why it's up in 2024 is, we had an increase in, in larcenies, thefts, and that these thefts don't include stolen cars. We had a 50 reported thefts at this point, in 2023, we have 67 reported at this point now, at the six-month mark. Again, this is more of an anomaly. In 2022, we had 65 reported at this time. I really don't know the reason why we only had 50 reported at this time in 2023, but at the end of the year, it, it pretty much came out to the averages that we normally have, but for whatever reason, it was very low at this point last year. The two areas that are most concerned to the, to the Summit residents, where we've been having the most problems over the last couple of years, are with the stolen cars and the burglaries. I'm happy to report that the burglaries are down this year, almost, it's a, where we at? A 46% decrease. We only have eight reported burglaries at this point, where we had 15 reported in 2023. Stolen cars, we have eight reported to date, and we only had eight reported last year to date, but stolen cars over the last two or three years have been slowly coming down. In 2022, we had 16 at this time, which is a 50% decrease from that point to 2022, 2023 and 2024. Also, we are, we are having success in the area of entries to motor vehicles. That's down 56% from where it was last year. We only had 17 attempts to enter motor vehicles, where we had 39 at this point last year. And again, this has been a slow decrease because of the efforts that we've been putting into it, and we had 58 reported entries to motor vehicles at this point in 2022. So to answer that, the resident's question, you know, we were putting out a lot of nixls when we were having the attempts to enter motor vehicles, and as you see, like last year, at this point, we had a 39, and then the previous year, we had 58. We've only had 17 this year, and when we, when we've had those attempts, when it, when we, you know, when it was like an emergent situation, we did put the nixls out. And when we don't put the nixls out for non-emergent, like after the fact, we try to put out something on social media, in addition to the, what we list on the police blotter, so that residents get it sooner. Okay, I think that's.
May I ask you a question? So if someone is in their neighborhood, and they are pulling on, you know, the door handles, they're walking down the street, and someone reports it, and they're still in the neighborhood, would a nixle go out so that people would know?
Yeah, most likely, we'll try to get a nixle out, then. When something is like, you know, it's actively in progress, and we have that information, and, you know, we have the ability to put it out, we'll get, you know, more times than not, we'll get it out. But a lot of times, you know, it'll be reported to us after the fact, and it's still important to get that information to the residents, but it's no longer, you know, an emergent situation where you have to get it out on the nixle, and we'll get that out either with a social media post, and/or it'll be on, it'll always be in the police blotter, but we'll try to get a social media post out, like, you know, within a day or two, so residents know, you know, sooner.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Chief. I, I, I appreciate your reports, and I just wanted to say that it's important to note that these achievements are a testament to your office's diligent work. And the mayor, I know how the mayor works on these initiatives. You, you, you meet together, I don't know if people know this, but you have, I don't know, like, three meetings. You meet with me, then you meet with each other, and then you meet with, you know, you've been meeting on reducing these types of crimes since day one, and the community engagement initiatives that you provide is also a testament. I, I really truly believe that the decrease in burglary, I mean, the burglary incidents reduced from 15 in 2023 to eight in 2024, 46.7% reduction. I think this is a significant decrease in the first six months. As we all know, crime can, you know, change in, you know, one day or two, but the major reduction in entry and attempted entry into motor vehicles, I mean, these incidents decrease, like you said, from 39 in 2023 to 17 in 2024, a 56.4% reduction. You know, this is a dramatic drop, and it also highlights the success of targeted interventions from your, from your police department to prevent vehicle break-ins. And lastly, you know, I just want to also talk about other initiatives that you have, like the home safe inspections, the youth academy that you just had, events like on July 4th, where you had the drones up and all the kids were out, even going down the Weaver Street the other day with your officers from community programs, you know, interacting with, with our Summit Housing Authority. These initiatives, where the police are taking proactive steps to engage with our community, you know, makes our community safe. We are, this is, this reminds me of a town where, you know, officers know the residents, right? You pull somebody over, you tell them to knock it off, and, you know, we know each other. This is a, this is a good police force, and you work with other community associations as well. So I just want to, I just want to thank you, Chief, and thank you for putting up with me for the last six months, I appreciate that too, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. If I could end with this, although we're, you know, the, these crimes of the residential burglaries and the stolen cars are trending downward, we're getting to a good place, and we're proud of the work we did, and, you know, a lot of the success of bringing these crimes, the crime rates down in these areas, it's because of the residents, what they've been doing, they've been, you know, taking preventative steps, you know, to prevent these crimes, and, you know, that, that, that's probably the, you know, the biggest factor in these crimes going down. But I want to caution everybody, like Councilman Boyer said, you know, this can change, because these crimes are still being committed in other jurisdictions. They're down a little bit in some jurisdictions, I don't think they're down quite as much as, you know, I reported here. Again, we're happy with what, you know, where we, where, you know, we're heading, and we're, you know, with these reductions, but, you know, residents have to remain vigilant, you can't put your guard down, because that's pretty much what got us in, you know, some of the trouble that we were in, you know, the last couple of years, because, you know, a lot of complacency. So again, you know, we have to make sure that we, you know, remain vigilant, and, you know, keep this trend going downward.
And we still have, you know, strategies that we haven't even put in place yet. Our, our two new officers haven't even, you know, started yet.
Oh, no, it's, it's a constant thing.
Yeah, we're, so there's more to come, right? So it's good. Thank you.
So take your key fobs in, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and lock your doors. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. We're going to move on to ordinances for hearing. Does anybody need a break?
No, I just wanted to say one thing. Do we get the, the petition that was signed? Did you provide that for the sidewalks? Okay. That would be to Rose, the city.
Oh, perfect.
So I'm working with IT. We're having an issue with the links that were in the email, so that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Does council need a break before we move on? Okay, great. We are going to do, I'm just going to let everybody leave for one second. Do you need a break?
You sure you wanted to?
Only if you need to. Do you need to? We're going to zoom through this. I mean, I can. Okay. I'd like to keep everyone here if I can.
We have a quorum.
30 seconds.
We have a quorum. People can leave.
All right. All right. Okay, great. We're going to do ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance.
Ordinance number 24-3324, an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant, pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Stormwater Management of Chapter 26 Stormwater Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Excellent. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yeah, thank you, Council President Allen. This is ordinance 24-3324. As the city clerk just said, this is an ordinance of the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7, 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Stormwater Management of 26 Stormwater Management Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit. I would like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Second.
Okay. Hearing is open. Council comments? Public comments? All right, we're going to close the hearing. Madam Clerk, please read the first ordinance for final consideration.
Ordinance number 24-3324, an ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting new stormwater management regulations pursuant to NJAC 7:8, and repealing and replacing Section 26-1 Stormwater Management of the chapter, of Chapter 26 Stormwater Management Regulations of the, of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Summit.
Excellent. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President Allen. Can I just ask a question? Why do we have to repeat this four times? You repeat it twice, and I repeat it twice.
You don't have to repeat it.
Is there, can we simplify this? If I can't?
I read it for, for the benefit of all. You don't need to repeat it.
Okay. So what should I say that would make it simpler?
Just say.
As the hearing was just held.
The hearing was just held. I would like to move the ordinance for adoption. I can't keep reading this, I have ADD.
I will second that.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Excellent. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Palowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Bartan?
Aye.
President Allen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. On to resolutions. Finance, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 11404, and this is a resolution determining the form and other details, such as the payment schedule for the remaining school bonds for 2024 in the amount of $13,929,000. Because Summit is a Type 1 school district, council approves ordinances for the issuance of bonds to fund our schools. Back in September of last year, council approved the issuance of the first half of these bonds, and this resolution is for the remaining portion. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Law and Labor, Councilman Palowski.
Hi, this is Resolution Number 11401. As discussed in closed session, this resolution is to authorize execution of a settlement agreement. I move to pass this, to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Palowski.
This is Resolution Number 11420. As discussed in closed session, this resolution is to declare vacancy in the city administrator's office. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Safety and Health, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 11403, authorize the purchase of a 2024 Chevy Silverado pickup truck. The pickup truck will be replacing an aging 2008 Dodge Durango, used for fire prevention, excuse me. So we're switching from an SUV to a pickup, which will allow storing personal gear and fire department equipment separately from the passenger compartment, protecting passengers from combustion products and health risk contaminants. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Community Programs and Parking Services, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 11406, declaring a vacancy in Parking Services Agency, impending our closed session discussion. I move to adopt this resolution.
Can I second?
Excellent. Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID 11374. This is to award the bid for the 2024 Ashwood Court cul-de-sac grading and wall reconstruction project in the amount of $78,360, that in accordance with the City Treasurer's Certification of Availability of Funds and Account Numbers Ending in 260 and 100, a copy of, which is here attached and made a part of this resolution and is recommended in a memo from the city engineer. Bids received by the purchasing agent on May 21st, 2024 shall be awarded to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, which would be Denbar Construction, the amount of $78,360. I'd like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Okay. Counsel comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries? You got that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet, second resolution?
Sorry, give me one second.
It's okay. It's paddle tennis.
What's that?
Paddle tennis. 11412.
Yeah, I got it. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. I apologize. I'm just going to wait.
TPW pickup?
That's the only one I, no. We're on the, um...
It's on page six on our agenda.
Yeah, I got it. I'm sorry. My packet's just a little bit messed up. Just give me one second. I promise I'll get it. Thanks, Matt. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
This is resolution ID 11412, which will reject the bids and authorize negotiations for the paddle tennis court improvement project. There were no responsive, responsive bids received for the paddle tennis court improvement project on June 4th, 2024, with the lone bidder being rejected due to flaws in the bid submitted, and whereas no bids were received for the paddle tennis courts improvement project on July 16th, 2024. The Department of Community Services Director requests permission to negotiate for paddle tennis courts improvement projects pursuant to the NJSA 40A11-53. I would like to move that the DCS director is hereby authorized to begin negotiations for paddle tennis court improvement projects pursuant to NJSA 40A11-53. I'd like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. Counsel comments?
Well, I can explain this one, and I'm super passionate about it because I'm a paddle tennis player. But there is, and Matt, Mr. Giacobi, you might want to chime in here, but I guess with, with all of these projects, these contractors have to have a Department of Public Works, Contractors License with Apprenticeship Programs, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So there are only, I believe, three or four paddle tennis companies that at least I'm aware of. The first one did not have the license. The second one, the second and third ones, I don't believe had the licenses. Some of them are willing to get that. I think it only takes 30 days. However, I think Director Schreger found a co-op that might also be building some paddle tennis courts. So I don't think it'll be totally held up, but it is a little frustrating to be here, you know, several years later, still without paddle tennis courts. I know there's a lot of desire for the community to have more pickle and more paddle, so if anybody else has any other suggestions, I guess we would have to negotiate at this point.
Excellent.
Counsel President?
Yeah?
Thank you. So the contractor that did initially bid on this, they just didn't have the apprentice?
They didn't have the license, from what I understand. Which also now I believe it requires an apprenticeship program, correct?
Well, so when you're, excuse me, through you, Council President, when you're doing the bid process, there are certain documents that are called fatal flaws, that if you don't contain them, you can't correct them. And it does appear in that case that that, that did happen. So that would instantly negate that bidder, and there was simply just one. And then the second, the second bid process had no bids. And under the law, that allows the municipality to then negotiate, having gone through two public and open processes for the project.
So could the current contractor rebid for this?
Well, there, there is no...
If there's no more bidding, it's now, Aaron can reach out to all the bidders and others to negotiate a price.
Okay.
And, um...
And it sounds like there aren't many of them, but the, the ones that we've begun conversation with are willing to get what is required when you do work on public property. You have to meet certain standards. So that's, that's that public works certification.
Let me give it to Councilman Bartan first, because he has...
If you want to go first.
Okay. I was just going to say, it has been, the paddle tennis courts were just built in Stone Harbor, and a bunch of residents actually from here play in Stone Harbor and Seagurt. And so we're seeing them pop up. So I don't know what they're doing that, you know, I guess maybe they're, they've already bid and rejected, and they were negotiating, but we'll figure it out. The QPA is calling down to Seagurt and Stone Harbor. And I know the mayor has some relationships, and I have some relationships with the people down in Stone Harbor, so we'll get to the bottom of it.
Councilman Bartan?
Yeah. So just, just for the benefit of the people watching, I'll just back us up a bit further, which is we have a couple of paddle tennis courts near Wilson Park. It's a winter sport, hardball. So, so the, it's $190,000, which, you know, is significant. There is a $70,000 grant, or a couple of grants that were received. You know, this, this process is not something that usually happens for these kinds of contracts, right? Like maybe it's a plowing contract or something where you'll wind up with, you know, nobody responding to the bid. This is, you know, a little bit odd for, I think, this kind of project. So, you know, my, I, what was, what I wanted to emphasize is this will come back to us at council again. It doesn't just empower the Department of Community Services to say, okay, this is who we're going to go with, this is the price, right? Because we don't want to get taken for a ride by some, some contractor who knows we already went through two rounds of a public bid process, didn't get anybody, right? So it does have to come back to us again for another vote. So just for the benefit of people watching. Thank you.
Excellent.
Counsel President, I mean, since we were awarded a, a grant for this, is there a timing issue, or would, do we have the, are we going to run out of time for the specific grant that we have to give it back?
I, I don't believe, excuse me, through you, Council President, I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Actually, the city being able to negotiate allows us to move in a very different pace than when you're doing a bid process, so, which requires a series of council approvals. So this is sort of, this can also work in, to the benefit of the city. The purpose of bidding is to make sure that it's an equitable purchasing process, because we're basically buying for the people. When you go through the process twice, then it does behoove the city to, to negotiate private, in, in a different manner than a bid process. So I don't think that would be a case where we would have a problem there.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Okay. Are there any public comments? All right. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Your third resolution, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yep. Yep. All right. Thank you, Council President. This is resolution ID 11399, authorizing New Jersey State contract purchase of a pickup truck, division of public works in the amount of $63,204. I would like to move this resolution for introduction.
Second.
Excellent. Counsel comments?
It looks like the fire department got a better deal on the pickup truck. I'm just saying.
I think, through you, Council President, our truck can do a bit more, but okay. It's smack talk with truck purchasing, I suppose.
I can see that. All right. Public comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're going to push number four to September, so Councilwoman Hamlet, number five, which is 11400.
I think I'm going to punt this one to Councilman Smallwood, if that's okay? Right?
Okay.
Council President, just a, just a comment on the fencing. Are we, are we, we're going to put it on the agenda again, or are we going to kick it to a committee?
Number, number, ID number 11359.
Through you, Council President. I mean, this is already in the caps committee, I believe.
Yeah.
So there were just a few things that we wanted to follow up on, and it would be more prudent for it to be, it will be ready for September. So it would be pushed to September, but it's still in caps.
And I, if you would like to take it in safety as well, in parallel, or join a cap meeting, you absolutely can.
Yeah, I mean, my, my number one concern is I just want the, you know, fire chief and the police chief to look into it, because it's, it's an enclosure now, right? And I don't know if they had a chance to, to look at the, the project, so.
Okay. And they're going to have another discuss, SDI is having another discussion tomorrow, so stay tuned, but stay in touch with Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yeah. But I think, if I may...
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. I, I think we definitely have to also probably have more committees look at it, because I know it's going back and forth with Chief Evers today, and I think like a formal memo stating that it's safe, and which I'm sure it will be, but I think just looking for guidance from our professionals, and also potentially even putting it in finance, because I think we have to abide to some pay-to-play rules for this as well. So I think we should probably process it as a formal DAR. And I think we can hopefully get it on the agenda in September, but I just think, you know, I was asking a lot of questions, like, does this impact our, you know, anything with our joint insurance fund? I just, I just needed a little more information on this, and I'm, I'm super excited. I hope it works out, but...
Since we are chatting about it, although it's not really good. There was some, there was a really great comment that came in about how the city would maintain this afterward, and how this is very similar to the fence that's along Summit Avenue, and how there's some dents along Summit Avenue. And I completely agree. I think that this could be something that we really need to look into, which is why I'm glad you suggested it for finance, is that, how this maintenance would be handled. So it's a very important point for the next time it's on the agenda.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Plousky?
Why do we need a fence around that?
Oh, no, no. We're not going to discuss it because we're pushing it. So...
We just discussed it. How are we going to maintain it?
All right. That's a good question. Put a pin in it, and cap will discuss it. So, all right. We're moving on to resolution 11400, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Councilwoman, Councilman Smallwood, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Smallwood. My apologies.
Yes, so this is ID number 11400, appoint recycling advisory committee members pending closed, closed session discussion. Each year we have two, or we have two vacancies for high school students to join the recycling committee, and the two that we had on our recycling committee this past year have graduated, and they recommended two other high school students to join the recycling committee. And Chairwoman Mimi Zukoff has vetted them, interviewed them, and I trust her recommendation 100%. As well as a high school, a new high school teacher will be joining us as well. So we'll have a, a high school staff, as well as two high school students, joining the recycling committee this year. So I'm excited to have them. So I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. Counsel comments? Public comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Council President, I think this is, I think this is Kevin's, too. I don't know why.
I'm sorry. Councilman Smallwood?
Aren't you 1141?
Wait, hold on.
The vacancy for Community Services.
Hmm. Do you need, do you need table it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, sorry, Rosie. This is one I'm in denial of.
I know.
You cannot...
I know, we can't introduce this one. Sorry.
Table it.
We're going to table it.
I've been, hmm. Okay. So this, I guess, yeah, this is declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, which we talked about in closed session. So I would like to introduce this for introduction.
For adoption.
For adoption.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Counsel comments? Well, I'm going to say something. We are sad to say that Matt Delory will be moving on, and his, I don't know about, I won't even see when your last day is, but Matt, you are an extraordinary individual. You are organized, you are kind, you are thoughtful, you are smart, you are strategic, and you have been really an incredible person, who has been a bit of a mentor for me over the last three years. And I wish I would have even been able to articulate that sooner. Sometimes you don't know how, you know, you don't know what you have until it's gone, although I've known what we've had. And you, your, you leaving is going to be a big, big loss.
Thank you.
Me, too. Me, too.
I want to wish Matt well, and we will miss you. I have been very, I have benefited from your wisdom. There are big shoes to fill, and thank you for your service to our community, and good luck in the future. And don't be a stranger.
Thank you.
Counsel President?
Yeah? Go ahead.
So Matt, I, I, I got to tell you, this doesn't happen often.
I'm in a, I'm in a committee meeting, I won't tell you which one it is, but someone
said to me, I heard a rumor that Matt's leaving. And I said, well, I can't deny or confirm that at this point, but a group of people at that meeting said, Matt is fantastic. And there's not a lot of committees that I go to where someone's name is mentioned, and everybody's on the same page, saying this person's fantastic. But you, you truly are. You're a professional, and I appreciate that from you. Actually, when you talk, people believe you, and that's the most important thing about, you know, someone in your profession, right? You know, helping people navigate this world of affordable housing is very difficult, and you'll be an asset to anywhere you go, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't continue with the love fest because I'm mad at you. So, um, that's it.
Oh, that's it. May I speak as a colleague?
We're in therapy together.
And Matt knows how I feel, and I won't cry again, but Matt's always been someone[1560.66] Matt knows how I feel, and I won't cry again, but Matt's always been someone that I could count on. He, he's, he's just an example of professionalism, and, and just takes every detail of his work so seriously, and he does it with grace, and I respect him highly, and I will miss him dearly.
I've never seen so many tears up here, but, geez Louise. Matt, you are just, you know, the amount of work you provide and do, your due diligence in, in a day is just unbelievable, and I know I will miss you, I don't know if you'll miss me, because I know I've completely tortured you with questions, and gosh, I hope I'm not one of the reasons you're leaving, because I know I torture you with questions. But you're such a valuable resource, and sometimes that comes with a big responsibility, and I know that we've been so lucky, big shoes to fill, whatever we can do to, you know, help you professionally going forward. Please let us know, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
It has been my pleasure to serve the people of Summit and multiple councils, and I will certainly miss it here, but I appreciate all the opportunities you've given me, and want to thank you and everybody for these kind words, I really appreciate it. It's a thankless work when you work in government, and to receive this kind of support is really heartfelt, so thank you all very much, I really appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President? I mentioned this before, and it's really not going to make a difference, but I reject your resignation. And I'll be voting against this vacancy.
And even though, even when we approve it, you can change your mind, so we're just saying.
You guys are good, great, thank you.
All right, thank you again. All right, public comments? Give them a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. It's going on the record, it is. All right, moving on. Councilman Boyer, safety and health.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 11430. By the way, someone is trying to trick me with these resolutions, because the, the one before was 11403. And I, I, you know, I'm glad I pointed that out, but anyway, this is authorizing the state contract purchase of a three-year lease slash purchase of two police vehicles for $35,964.23 per year. This is a secession plan to replace the vehicles. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Council comments?
I just have one. I spent way too much time on this today than I probably wanted to spend, but I would like to say that we have to replace the quote in here, Rosie, correct? In the actual packet? Because the quote was wrong.
I sent the correct quote inadvertently.
Okay.
There was a, there was extraneous or extra information that wasn't, didn't apply to this purpose.
Right, so anybody who's looking at this quote, it was not the right one, so I spent way too much time today picking it apart, and then we realized, but the, the actual financing quote was correct, which led us to another discussion today, but I think it's, it's totally great, I just spent a little too much time on it today.
Thank you. All right, public comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait, can I, I didn't want to pull something out. Did I pull it out after that?
Yeah, so just to remind everybody, the, that we are pushing number two under cap, number two, under cap, I'm sorry, which was, yeah, number two, which was 11384, so we're pushing that to September as well.
So, Council President, may I say something? So, Mr. Delory, I put a phone call into Boswell today, because I just wanted more information, but I'm sure Director Schreger, I think he's coming back this week.
Yeah, I hope he's back.
I think we could have probably moved forward with it if Director Schreger was here, but I just needed a little more information, I think Greg probably did too, so we'll get it done in September, I guess.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Okay. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, are there any public comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are moving on to Councilmember comments and new business. Are there any council comments on this end? Nope? Councilwoman Hamlet, did you want to talk about?
I just wanted to give a quick planning board update, just because it was relevant, and it was Matt's final hurrah on the planning board. I was not at the planning board meeting, I was on vacation, but I did want to give a quick recap, I think it was also pertinent to some of the questions that the residents had. The planning board created a DRO subcommittee a few months ago, so Development Regulations. They came up with a draft form of about nine or 10 ideas for discussion, changes and edits to the DRO. The planning board member Jennifer Alvarez, Steve Spur, and a few others discussed how the last reexamination was in 2016. As all of you know, a lot of citizens were involved in that, and the goals in the master plan, the master plan document, is the basis upon which we write our DRO. Here's a quick summary of the things the planning board is looking at, in the DRO. The first is a possible update to the historic preservation ordinance that they have been working on. There has been a lot of discussion over the decades to improve it, give it a little more teeth. HPC is currently talking to DCS about this in the city council. Number two is with, regarding design guidelines, which we added to our DRO, but for those of you who have read the DRO one or two times, you'll notice it's at the back of the DRO, so the recommendation was to put those design guidelines, which architects and, and such should follow, so they're recommending to put those at the front, and obviously all of this would come back to council for review. Number three is looking at parameters for allowable roof decks downtown. Number four is looking at some more of the stacked parking, there's quite a, a little bit in the DRO of stacked parking, but just looking upon that. Number five was accessory dwelling units. Back when we did the master plan, it is included. Mr. Delory mentioned this at the meeting, the state is considering this, although it's stuck in committee, but they are considering controlling zoning on a, on a blanket statewide scale to allow for these accessory dwelling units as permitted uses in all residential areas. Double dormers, it's in the DRO, but they were looking to expand some of the conversation in there. Seven was in-kind replacement of existing AC units, some expansion upon that, and there's two or three more. They also talked a little bit about 55 and older housing, and I think in the new, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, the new Affordable Housing Regulations, the percentage of units that can be set aside for, I think, 62?
It increases.
It increases from, I think, 25 to 30%. So all of these things, I know Council, a former Councilwoman, Harrison, talked about affordable housing, so that's why I wanted to give some of those updates. They also talked about cross-acceptance and the state plan, when that comes in September?
Yeah, so just real quick, cross-acceptance is the municipalities in the county aligning their local planning with the state plan. The state plan hasn't been published yet, but City of Summit has requested that we participate in that planning process. The planning board will be hosting a session likely in September that will afford, help members of the public to come forward and answer a few questions about what they think some of their major planning goals for the city are. That's separate from a master plan process, which the planning board is also looking to take part in next year. The master plan is due every 10 years or a reexamination, it isn't due until 2026, but the planning board would like to get ahead and use the 2025 year to really get going, because we want to do a lot of listening and making sure the public has an opportunity to opine. Cross-acceptance is just the alignment of the local, county, and state plan, and so there's just some questions that the planning would be asking of the public. It'll be both an opportunity to come in person to the planning board in September, and then also there'll be an email address or an opportunity for ways in which people can submit their, their feedback that way as well.
And the, I guess I'll piggyback off that to say there's a lot of discussion around, obviously with having to redo our master plan, there are pieces within our fair share plan that were, that were updated and the reexam, so Joe Burgess and firm are going to present a memo to the planning board, which I think will be very helpful to the Mount Laurel Committee and the planning board. The last thing in the DRO, I might have missed one, but was talking about consistency reviews. For those of us who have watched any planning board meetings, and recently we had one where we spent three or four hours, and, you know, we, it's only a courtesy review, and we spend a lot of time trying to get, get them to comply, and so we're trying to get maybe those courtesy reviews a little bit sooner, or just making them have a little bit more teeth, so that we can, whether it's stormwater management or, or things like that. So I hope that wasn't too long, but it was a really good meeting at the end, Joe Burgess gave a lot of good comments, and Matt, thank you for your leadership on the planning board as well.
Okay, are we good?
Council President? Through you. Just real quick, I wanted to do this a couple of meetings ago, but I wanted to congratulate Jaclyn Gray from the Summit Housing Authority on her new role as the Executive Director. With two decades of experience in New Jersey Housing Authority organizations, Mrs. Gray's expertise and leadership are invaluable assets to the Summit Housing Authority. And, you know, I am confident that under her guidance, the Summit Housing Authority will continue to improve and serve the tenants and the Summit Housing Authority community. At our last Summit Housing Authority meeting, we were talking about affordable housing, and my view, as all of you know, since day one, has been to protect home base. You know, I'm a Dennis Place Weaver Street Glenwood kid, you know, played around there and everything else, and I know that we have an opportunity to rehabilitate and help rehabilitate those areas. And I would, I've encouraged the Summit Housing Authority to get in touch with, you know, our city council and work with, you know, our, our city to, to really push that forward, you know. Those residents have, have been without certain quality of life improvements for a long time now, and, you know, the faster we move, the better, so I just want to be on record for saying that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. With that, anything else? I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Second.
No, no, I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And then do I have a second?
Second.
Excellent. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.